Great. Sounds good. All right, good, good evening, everyone. The city of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-three. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click up, click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call upon you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge. Roll call.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President.
Good evening. I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Uh, yes, we will start with the hearings for five P M. First case is B O A one four six four nine zero one. The address being forty-four Brooks Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Do we have a Mr. Martinez, Hector Martinez, or someone representing him?
Si, ya, tres personas.
Okay, are you, are you the applicant?
Ah, yeah, I'm the applicant.
He's the applicant.
Great. Can you introduce yourself, uh, put your name and address into the record and then just, uh, let us know what relief you're seeking?
Eh, el nombre mío es Hector Martinez. El cuarenta y cuatro Brooks Street.
Is someone translating for him?
Yes, we're here translating, yep, thank you.
Okay, he just went mute. Uh, Mr. Martinez, we, we actually need you to present your case.
Okay, sorry about that. We're here with Hector now, so Hector, basiamente, estamos pidiendo que tú presentes el caso ahora.
Yeah. El caso es solo para vender ice cream.
So it's to sell ice cream?
Yeah. Esticados.
Esticados?
Si, la persona solo compra el lado y se lo lleva.
Oh, and it's for takeout?
Eh, me beneficia a mí primero y a la comunidad porque tiene los lados escritas. Y beneficio a la persona, la persona trabaja una, dos, tres personas más.
So it, it benefits to me and it also benefits the community who has another ice cream place close by, uh, and also benefits some folks that I'm able to hire because of that.
Okay. Any questions? From the board?
I have no questions, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Uh, was that, uh, may I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns related to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, Chair, if you could, I don't know if we could give testimony on behalf of Mutual A D C. We're also serving as actors translators, but if that's possible, we could also provide some testimony.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for that. Um, so I'm Leo and I'm here with Gladys. We're part of the Mutual A D C team, which is a neighbor-to-neighbor support network in East Boston. Hector's part of our network. Uh, and we appreciate him for everything he does to contribute to the community and fully support. Um, you know, really the, the store in general, who's been very friendly to folks. It's a, it's a very well-known place, Gladys. I don't know if you want to add to that, too.
Very cool place. Um, um, everything they serve is very good and a lot of people go there and everyone enjoys it.
Thank you.
Wait, it's in support of Hector and his application to, for the permits to sell ice cream. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Yeah.
Hearing none, may I have a motion? Is that a? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval. Está aprobarlo?
May I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Chárraz, yes.
Next, we have case B O A one four one six three two seven. With the address of nine sixty-four Saratoga Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Yes, this is attorney Britton Munson, uh, representing the applicant.
Great. Can you tell us what relief you're seeking?
Of course. So we are looking, the restaurant has an existing patio space that they already use, uh, right there along the side of the building. And so they're looking to just put a, essentially a canopy, a little bit of a roof just off the side of the building to cover it from the elements, things of that nature, uh, for their guests that are already using it. They've been using it for years now. And so they're just looking for a little structure to go right above it.
Excellent. Uh, any questions from the board?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, we have the applicant, uh, disperse flyers out to a butters and, uh, no concerns were raised. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms., uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four eight zero eight four four. With the address being five hundred Boylston Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Uh, yep, Daniel Brennan here.
Okay. And what relief are you seeking?
Um, so this is a space over at five hundred Boylston Street, formerly a retail store Talbets. It's been subdivided by our landlord and a piece of it is, um, looking to become a Starbucks coffee shop. Uh, we recently closed one over at four forty-three Boylston, so we were looking for a replacement. Um, and the, uh, restaurant takeout use thirty-six A, and I believe the restaurant use thirty-seven are conditional. So, uh, that's why we're here before the board.
Got it. So you closed the one that's on that corner? I can't remember.
Yeah, Berkeley and Boylston.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Uh, straightforward. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, sorry, Madam Chair, just give me one sec. Uh, yes, at this time, the mayor's office like to defer judgment to the board. Um, our office conducted a butters meeting on April fourth, uh, with no community members in attendance. The applicant also reached out to the Neighbor Association of Back Bay and, uh, the Back Bay Association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. Uh, with that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No other raised hands.
Other raised hands, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four eight zero eight three nine. With the address of two Park Plaza is the applicant and or the representative present.
Uh, yep, Daniel Brennan here for Starbucks Coffee again.
Okay, same drill.
Yep, so, um, this one is on the corner of Park Plaza and Boylston, right by the Public Gardens. It's currently a boloco, uh, Mexican fast casual. They actually reached out to the Starbucks real estate team to, um, get out of their lease. Um, we recently, um, closed another Starbucks close by in the transportation building. Um, and over on Charles Street, I think it's Zero Charles Street or something like that. So we were looking for a replacement and, uh, this is a good fit. They, we're not technically changing the use, but, um, because the original decision said for this petitioner only, we're looking to, um, remove that and have it for Starbucks.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may, uh, have a testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, our office is unaware of any concerns with this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Hi, this is Laura from Council President's Office. I would like, um, to go on full support on behalf of Council President Flynn, and also for the last one, five hundred Boylston Street, we also, um, are going on full support with that one as well. Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Next, we have case B O A one four four seven five three zero. The address being twelve fifty Boylston Street is the applicant and or the representative present. Anyone for twelve fifty Boylston Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you, uh, state your name and address and, uh, just let us know what you're proposing?
All right, my name is Hashim. We're proposing like a food trailer, a coconut table combo. Uh, to twelve fifty Boylston Street.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch what it was.
Was like a food trailer at the location of twelve fifty Boylston Street.
Okay, and what are you serving?
Are we serving like, um, waffle and French crib with the Middle East signature flavors? Serving like high-quality products to our customers with the bang in mind of the economic needs of the community.
Got it. Any questions from the board?
No, no questions at all.
All right, with that, uh, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, some background information on the community process. Uh, we had the applicant flyer, uh, property owners within three hundred feet and reach out to the Fenway Civic Association. Uh, we heard from some folks with some initial concerns with the applicant work to address and answer all those questions. And those of butters have stated that they know, have no objections to the proposal at this time. Our office is unaware of any further concerns, but that will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No other raising hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four six seven seven five two. With the address of ten Saint Margaret Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Uh, yes, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Attorney John Pulgeny on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined today by Jim and Katie Murphy, uh, together with Chris Drew, who is their architect. Um, before I begin this presentation, I would like to remind the board that this proposal came before you in August of two thousand and twenty-one. At that time, the project was approved with the proviso of no side yard violation. That proviso was justifiedly so at that time, proposed by Ms. Better Barata. So I'm very glad that we were here before you again this afternoon. Um, at that time, the Murphys were not represented by council and had a difficulty articulating the support they, and the hardship. Uh, this proposal involves, uh, they spent over a year looking for a redo. Since that time, they spent over a year looking for redesign options that, uh, just wouldn't work. And during that time, Katie Murphy was diagnosed with a serious medical condition, which will require ongoing outpatient and inpatient treatment at Maldorman Hospital. Now turning to the side addition, which is the reason we are here. At the early hearing, they didn't provide testimony from Travis Stewart, who is the abutter where the addition will be located. Mrs. Stewart is the only one impacted, and he will, uh, testify later to the board. This neighborhood is unique. They have a single family that is located in a two-family zoning sub-district. Additionally, they have, we, we have this property, when I say that the property is unique, they have a proposed cannabis delivery facility that will be, is, uh, going through permitting right now directly behind their house. And that building, if you look at the, your tablets, is basically a zero, uh, rear yacht setback. Looking at this neighborhood, you will see houses that are very tight. In fact, the building to the Murphy's right is approximately three feet from their house. From house to house, it's about three feet. This addition, while requiring a setback violation to the lot line, separates the houses as there is a driveway of approximately twelve feet in between the two structures on the left side of the property. And in, and this addition is only a hundred and sixty-eight feet, and this living space is required for Kate, Tim, Jim, and their four kids. I, when they first came to my office, I agreed with the original decision from the board. Uh, communication was lacking and the whole picture not presented. The Murphys have lived in this house for twenty-seven years. Katie's parents had lived in this house prior to that. This is the house that she grew up in. They need to stay here for ongoing medical treatment. If you guys look at this house, it's a total disrepair. If they were to sell it, they wouldn't be able to live in the Boston area, which would really probably a distant suburb, which would seriously disrupt their treatment plans and the children's relationships. We hope today, um, story will respectfully allow reconsideration with all the facts before you. Um, I will, at this point, just turn it over to Chris Drew to walk you through the plans, but in essence, this proposal was approved basically as is with the proviso, uh, of a no side yard setback, and we're here just to address that today. Um, I'm here for any questions, and Chris Drew is here to present plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um, so basically what we're talking about, it's a, the garage itself would be about ten foot six wide by about twenty-five feet deep. Uh, on the second floor, there would be, uh, one, one additional bedroom, uh, which would be about ten six by sixteen. Um, happy to answer any other questions or, or dive further in if, if anybody has anything specific.
Madam Chair, I have a question just for clarification.
Yes.
Um, so, um, when I was reviewing the file, there was a letter saying that originally there was, um, a side yard of three foot two from six inches. Is that still applicable?
Yes, that's so. If you go back to the landscape plan, that three foot two is pre-existing on the right-hand side. So that little grass, yes, yep.
Got it. So the three foot two is on the right-hand side, and then what is, is the six inches on the left hand?
Correct, yes. So that little brown, you know, the little brown.
Six inches, okay. Thanks for the clarification. I thought you had modified it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have a public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Background information on the community process, our office hosted a butters meeting on May thirty-first. Understand it was a productive meeting where the applicant addressed questions and concerns that neighbors raised, uh, that then went on to meet with the Civic Association, which is the McCormick Group, uh, and they voted to support this proposal. Uh, we're unaware of any concerns at this time. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Ma- Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support of the applicant today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton from Council Murphy's office. Um, the applicant completed a thorough community process and has support from direct butters and neighbors. Um, the councilor sent over a letter of support, but would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
You? I think the abutter is on, is that right, Mr.?
Travis, you're unmuted?
Hi, yes. Um, yes, I'm Travis Stewart, eight Saint Margaret Street. I'm the director of butter. Um, known Jim and Katie for well over a decade now. Um, I'm in full support as the director of butter for this, and also from the civic as a board member of the McCormick Civic, we also support that, too.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Phone call ended in seven one six three. You're unmuted?
Yes, thank you. Um, my last name is Strum. I live directly across the street from Mr. Murphy. I've known his family for thirty years, going to the parents before him, and I'd just like to say I'm in full support of his project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm always a big advocate for making sure the most affected girl butters are in support of your renovation, given that, given that, um, the lawyer presented all the arguments and support for the project. I'd like to put forward a motion, uh, of approval, um, with B P D A design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you everybody much.
Next, we have case one three nine nine five seven three. The address being sixteen oh one Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Good afternoon. I'm actually the homeowner. The applicant is Oswald, who's my contractor. He's also online. Um, if you pull up the, the plan, it's an additional dwelling unit or space for me and my two children that are eleven and twelve now. I have met with the, um, it's called the H G G O B A on March twenty-seventh to present my plans. So that's the community. They have agreed and they said they back me on anything that I do. I believe somebody from the community is online to support me. Yeah, I don't know if there's any.
And what are you presenting? What are you seeking relief on?
Um, to get approval. Well, I needed to meet with the Board of Appeals to get approval to continue building, well, adding that additional area in my basement.
Um, and just, and what, what kind of living space is it going to be? Bedrooms or just, um, family room?
Family room.
Okay. Any question, other questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Uh, O N S hosted a butters meeting on March twenty-seventh, where butters expressed support for the project and the applicant. Uh, they went on to connect with, uh, Mike Kozu from Project Right. Uh, our support was also given from that group as well. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Oh, other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that there'll be no building code relief.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one three nine nine five four six. With the address of forty-five Winthrop Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Yes, good, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Secretary Attorney Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Dane Torpey, one seventy-five Federal Street, Boston zero two one one zero. Um, I wanted to, uh, to present this case, and I wanted to do it in this particular format, if you will, Madam Chair. I would like to just begin the process. I would like to have, introduce my, uh, clients to have them say something on the record. I'm going to ask the, um, engineer, Mr. Marino, to talk about the project. And then I wanted to bring to the board's attention the support that the applicant has, uh, for, uh, for this particular proposal. I would, I would say at the outset, this is a house on, uh, at, uh, uh, at forty-five, uh, Winthrop Street, which was built in eighteen ninety. My clients bought it. We're just, this is not the one we're going to use. I can u- use this one later if we can just put the planner for the moment. Thank you, uh, Ms. Hayes. Um, the board, uh, property was built in eighteen ninety. They bought the property in two thousand and twenty-one, and the condition which we're talking about and which will be discussed particularly by Mr. Marini is, uh, is exactly what, uh, is being sought here. They had a, they purchased this property in two thousand and twenty-one, and my client's names are Ms. Valerie Dez Mangels and, um, Michael Williams. They bought the property in two thousand and twenty-one. At the time, they were told that there was two spaces that were, uh, there for parking, uh, and they proceeded, uh, in, in that regard. Today, what there is being sought, and I'm surprised with some of the concerns that have been raised in the neighborhood, but that's, uh, you will hear, speak, hear references to that. This is simply a, uh, an effort in order to move a, um, um, a curb, curb cut, a particular distance, and I'm going to leave the mathematics and the dimensions of that to Mrs. Marini in order to elaborate on it. But I think it's important for the, for the board to hear exactly the relationship that my clients have, both through family means, but as well as personally to this neighbor. So if you will give me the benefit of doing that, Madam Chair, I would like to do that very, very briefly. So, um, Valerie, Michael, why don't you address the board?
Hello, board. My name is Valerie. Um, just introduce myself a little bit more. I grew up in Dorchester. I am an alum of Metco and was afforded the opportunity to make friends around the city of Boston, including Roxbury, eventually leading me to my life partner, Michael, who is from Roxbury. I graduated from Mercy School here in Boston and remain invested in the city and currently work at Mass General as an emergency department nurse. My shift hours are odd. I am a night nurse and usually get off at work around three, four o'clock in the morning. Coming home around that time, safety and security is an issue, um, for me. We bought the house in two thousand and twenty-one when we found out we were going to be starting a family and welcomed a son in February of two thousand and twenty-two, and his safety as well. To, um, be able to get him in and out of the car safely off-street is very important to us as well. We are fortunate to have family members who are very involved in our lives and, um, help take care of our son. In particular, my mom, she is handicapped and has mobility, um, limited mobility issues. And we are, we want to provide safe and easy access to the entry of the home, um, to, for her benefit. The nearest off-street resident parking, visitor parking, sorry, is a quarter of a mile away from our house. The entire street is residential parking. Um, we are sandwiched between a church and also a school, and during peak hours of pickup and drop-off hours, as well as, uh, church services, parking congestion becomes a problem, and we are seeking to have, um, the ability for off-street parking.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. Um, so my name is Mike Williams and, um, as Valerie, man, and I grew up in Roxbury. I'm also on. I'm also a Metco alum, but I attended Boston Public Schools first, actually in Roxbury, right around the corner from the house that we purchased in two thousand and twenty one. And also played at the Boys and Girls Club, literally, right? Maybe a hundred yards away from the house that, that we purchased in two thousand and twenty one. Uh my paternal, both my paternal and maternal great-grandparents moved from the south to Roxbury to make that their home, um to raise their families, and they've been invested in this community for close to a hundred years. Uh my mom worked as a elect, worked for an elected official actually too, um in politics for a really long time. Um and I remember being a high school student, attending these EBA meetings regularly. I never would have thought that I'd be in one, um actually presenting to try to get a variance approved. Uh I want to also say um my, my grandmother, um also is someone that has been very active in the political scene in Boston, Dorothea Jones, um and she's someone that's been an inspiration to me my entire life. I know she's still right now, currently serves on the Mayor's Reparations Committee. Um and then uh finally, my late grand, great-grandfather, or excuse me, my late grandfather uh drove a cab all throughout the city of Boston in the sixties. He came up here from Birmingham, Alabama, as a way to escape the things that were happening in the south at the, in the forties and the fifties, and he moved up here to support his family. And to ensure that um like me and like my, my, my cousins, my sister, we all got educated and we were in a position to actualize that American dream of owning a house. I attended college in Georgia, um moved back here for graduate school. And my career, I've worked in politics. I was a legislative aide for a while. Um and then I transitioned to work for the city of Boston for over six years to help court-involved gangs, involve young people throughout Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan, get jobs and also finish their high school diploma or get into college. Currently, I work in a, I work for philanthropy. Uh I'm uh work for a major foundation in, in New England. Um and it was important for me and Valerie to want to start and raise our family in the same community that gave us so much in a place that has, you know, such a rich familial history with us. Um I want to ensure, obviously, my family is my priority now, but wanting to really ensure that Valerie is safe. Um and knowing that, you know, over the past, we've had uh squatters that have been in our building uh under renovation, and we've also encountered folks from Mass and Taz that have been starting to pop up in the area in the early mornings around the time that Valerie gets off of work. So we're really just trying to prioritize our safety and also the issues that Valerie raises are also relevant. Uh thank you, and I'll pass it back to Joe.
Okay, maybe can we ask some questions, Mr. Feaster, since?
Yes, well, you can. I, in fact, if you want, Ms. Marini can talk about the project in terms of what's planned. Is that, that's what I was having, Ms. Dog.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Marini, can you describe what you are, what you are proposing?
Rob Marini, native tech, thirty-one Monroe Street in Lynn. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
Okay, uh the curb cut existed at eighteen feet. We're just shifting and centering it on, on the lot of forty-five uh so that uh we can enable two cars to park in an angle and access. Now, the concrete, the sidewalk will be repaved, concrete sidewalk, and basically the curb cut remains the same. And it's just shifted so that two cars can access independently. Uh the steps uh there's a curb that really kind of controls the progression of the vehicle so that it can stop at the curb, at the curbing and not interfere with pedestrians exiting from the house. So and any handicapped person can access through the gap between the curbing, which isn't needed in the, where the gap is, because the cars are at an angle. If the whole purpose of the curb is essentially, it's a wheel stop. So there's improvements to the sidewalk. There's improvements to the front yard there that there was a low retaining wall. It just wasn't disrepair anyway, so the actual paved surface is bituminous between the curbing and the concrete sidewalk. So it's a smooth surface to access. Um we believe that um it'll be safe and it'll be a clean treatment of uh the front yard space and overcome any kind of um configurational non-conformity that is being questioned or could be questioned.
How are the cars parking presently? You're showing them like that you want them to be able to park at this angle. So how are they parking now?
I can share the screen. There's an existing survey.
Can't share screens, but if you could just are they just parking straight, like?
Yeah, they're parking straight or um in, in the wall is close. Um I'd have to look at the survey, but I, this is a while ago that we looked at it, but I believe that um the wall is too close to the sidewalk, that, that wall had to be removed, and so this curb will take its place, but it'll be put back uh further into the lot. So there's not enough room right now, basically.
And
the way the configuration of the site is.
Do any of your other neighbors have front yard parking?
Um Mike or Mr. Uh Feaster? For, is there any other neighbors have parking?
Front yard parking, because I, I mean, this is probably not a question for you, but uh this, the second part of my question is probably not for you, but just as a matter of whether those are legal front yard parking spots or not. Maybe that's a Samantha question.
Well, I uh Ms. Dog, two things I can answer for you in the question, your inquiry to Mr. Marini. One is prior to this, only one car was parked there, where they did not park two, two vehicles in there because they could not.
Okay.
The uh, to your other question is, that's the reason for the photographs that were there before. It shows a mo- uh if you look and may not want to give the board, because I know you're pressed for time in terms of that, but I've submitted for the record and it's here in terms of all of the places uh throughout the neighborhood, throughout this community and on Winthrop Street in terms of the type of parking spaces, including some of the properties that are right adjacent to this uh two here that have, have the parking. Um so you have that, you have as well, uh so yeah, in the record uh a support letter from Councilor Tanya Anderson, Tanya Nandys Anderson. And you have uh in, put in the record, submitted uh fifty-seven signatures on a petition in support of this. Uh so, you know, as, as Mr. Marini said, the, the effort here is just simply to shift a uh, a curb cut over so that this safety concern that have been raised by this family can be addressed. It is, is not significant, is not removing a space from uh, from on the street, so uh we would hope that's board with uh the favorably towards this proposal, and I pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Ma- Madam Chair, to answer your question, most of the driveway are pretty kind of long driveways, parking at the rear. Now, some of the property do have some parking parked, you know, closer to the sidewalk. Um but the topology is typically just a long driveway to the rear.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question in terms of what's the current width of the existing curb?
Curb cut?
Mm-hmm.
It's eighteen. It's, it's, it remains, it's shifted and centered now.
It's eighteen, eighteen. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Uh yes, um earlier, as they were talking, um they had mentioned that they're doing this specifically for a family member who um who has disability, believe.
No, uh no, uh Mr. Secretary. What was mentioned is, no, they're doing it for the safety of and provide off-street parking for the following reasons. One is for uh for uh Valerie, who is the nurse, in the time that she comes home, so that she has been able to go into that there uh the, there have been some changes in the neighborhood, which makes some of the safety concerns uh prevalent. Three, because it's all resident parking, that if any of their uh family members come to assist with childcare and other matters, the difficulty in terms of parking. And then the last one, they did mention that, yes, if her mother came by, who is disabled, they wouldn't want to be have a place where they could pull into the car so she can have better access in terms of to the property. So those are reasons, uh, Mrs. Sten.
Okay. May I suggest?
But you currently can use it as a, you currently can use, can park one, park in one uh car right now.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Right. So theoretically, the person with the residential sticker could park on the residential street. But with that, I'm gonna open it up to public testimony, because there, we do have a full agenda and uh, you know, we've spent a long, long time on just the uh presentation. So can we open it up to public, public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Uh our office conducted a Butters meeting on May third, where a number of Butters expressed opposition due to what they felt is increasing front yard parking, which would set a precedent potentially for the, for that street. Uh the applicant went on to meet with the local Civic Association, which is the Roxbury Path Forward, uh which voted to oppose the project. Um a Butters collected a total of forty-seven signatures in opposition, and I believe, as you heard from the uh applicant, I believe there's also signatures in support as well. Uh with that, we'll defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
We have eleven, twelve raised hands.
Okay, well, let's uh um, well, it would be great if we could try to have those people who are um opposed lower it first so that we can make sure that we're balanced and, and hear both sides, but you guys do your best. I'm, I'm not gonna listen to twelve. Uh let's, let's start with the three or four and see where we go.
Okay. Sabine, you've been unmuted?
My name is Sarah, and I'm here on behalf of the Council of Lisbon, the Council of Lake and Forest and
I'm sorry, I, I did not hear if you were in support or opposition. Support, thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Um the council to go on record in opposition, with all due respect to the proponent, barring any extreme circumstances, the council has been clear that um he does not support uh front yard parking, so at this particular point, he's in opposition. Thank you.
You've been unmuted? Is there any?
My name is Sabine. I am the sister of Valerie Desmangles. I am a resident at eighty-five Galivan Boulevard. I reside with my mother, who is the person in question, who will be visiting and supporting my sisters with childcare when necessary.
Okay, so we assume you're in support, so we're gonna keep going. I'm sorry. Let's keep going.
Um may I, may I also say something, because um for those that are opposing, I hear you're opposed, but I do not hear a reason. If you could give a reason so that we can explain, that would be very helpful, because all I hear is no. And in the chat, I hear some, I see something about a true. In my opinion, that is not a reason to not um accept something, so.
Okay, thank you.
Say why.
Yes, you asked for reasons. Thank you.
My mother is also here.
Can you please move on?
Kyle, you've been unmuted?
Yes, um.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and distinguished members. Um I'm here with the Butter who lives right next door. Her name is Nadine Riggs. And she will give you the reasons that you would like to hear why she's opposing and you know, the reasons why all the neighbors are opposing this. I, she's gonna take my place right now. She's right here, so she's gonna use my computer. Is that all right? She's gonna give you all your li- all the list.
Well, actually, I'm not gonna give reasons why. I'm just gonna state reasons why the community has voted no. Um as stated previously, we have forty-five signed, three-page letter of opposition. And I am the Director Butter to the um to forty-five. We share a firewall. I'm opposing this request for several reasons. First, Article fifty says no parking in the front yard. Two, Winthrop Street is a long street. We cover, we're about four to five blocks long. No one has front yard parking. Everyone either has parking on the side or a driveway that leads to the back, but again, no one has front yard parking. Forty-five already has an illegal curb cut for one parking space. So in terms of their reasons, which seem to be really just self-serving, when they purchase the property, no one misled them. You can look at pictures, Google old pictures. My neighbor, because I've lived at um forty-three, I moved in in twenty-ten. I purchased in twenty-twelve. When I moved there, my neighbor parked her very large um station wagon in the front yard. It's always only been one car in the front yard. So in terms of their reasons of saying that they were told it was two-car parking, it's never been two-car parking because there's no room. Um second, um the developer's wife, Valerie, is a nurse. She works late hours. A lot of our neighbors work late hours. They already have one parking space. I would assume if Valerie's coming home late, that Michael's gonna do the husbandly thing and park his car in the front yard. I mean, excuse me, park his car on the street. Two, in terms of visiting family members, elderly, disabled, again, they already have an illegal off, off-street parking in the front yard. So my assumption is, if you have people visiting, you're going to make adjustments so that person can park in the front yard and access um your home. Another point is, we do have permit parking. It ends at six P M. Wide open. The only time Winthrop Street has a, uh, an issue with parking is when it's Sunday, because we have four houses of worship on Sunday. When I leave my home on Sunday, I put out two cones. No one's ever bothered my cones. But that's the only time there is an issue with parking. There's always parking.
Thank you, Madam.
Can I say just one more thing?
At our
Okay, on our cor- at our corner, there are four houses, two of the residences in their multiplexes, they all have on-site parking. Forty-three and forty-five, we're the only ones who park on the street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, let's try to get one or two more before we move on.
Violet, you're, you're unmuted?
Yeah, so I mean, just everything that um Nadine has said. I actually live on the lower end of Winthrop Street, and that is where there is an issue oftentimes with parking. In the air, in the block where Nadine and Nadine's home is in forty-five, there is parking, plenty ample parking on, on the opposite side of the street. So um, you know, to have
Do you have any new reasons to, it's not, can you state?
I'm just Okay, I'm just affirming what she said. That's it.
So you're opposed. Thank you.
I am opposed, yes.
Okay, let's, let's take one more.
Malia unmuted?
I am still with the opposing, and this is Sabine, and I just want to answer Nadine or the other person who just said that.
Spoke, so I, we're, we're trying to take new testimony. Uh
Okay.
Folks, so can we please have someone new, Stephanie?
District Seven?
And put your hands down if you've already spoken or if you're part of the application team or family.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me? Thank you, Madam Chair and board. Um my name is Nicole. On behalf of the District Seven Office and Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson, we are in very strong support of the curb cut. Um we believe that this will greatly promote the safety for their family. This family has been in Roxbury and active in Roxbury for generations. And thank you very much. And that is in addition to a letter of support we have submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think um
Want more, Madam Chair?
Uh I'm gonna ask the, the, the members if you have any other questions or if you feel you need to hear anymore. Ms. Better Brazza or?
Um Madam Chair, um I know Bob D'Amico spoke. Could you please read the Boston Transportation Department recommendation and also the Boston um BPDA recommendation?
I don't have Mr. D'Amico's in front of me. I'm not sure if um
Okay, I can read.
Stenbridge goes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Bob D'Amico um said, uh there's simply not enough room for regarding this case. Also, this request would result in front yard parking. I would like to request a denial in this case. So that's the B T D, and then um for the BPDA, um they're also recommending denial due to um uh for one um new curb, curb cuts should be at ten feet. And um spaces that are, there should be one compact and one standard size. Right now, the applicant is proposing two compact space, which is not allowed, and this is why they are recommending uh denial. Um so with that, I would like to um put a motion forward of denial. Um, so with that, I would like to um, put a motion forward of denial.
May I have a second?
Uh, no, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay, uh, since we have no um unanimity, let's try another vote.
Um.
Oh, no motion, sorry.
I'd like to put a motion for that we uh, defer this case uh, until a lot, the larger body can hear it. Um, there are good reasons on each side. Um, but I think if we have other people also listen to it, we may be. So, the short of that would be uh, to propose we uh, remove the case in full body at a later date.
Do we have a second?
Um, Brazza, I would second that.
Uh, then, in the interest of moving this forward, uh, let's make a motion, I mean, let's uh, vote, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes, motion carries.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is hotter, for, for the next day, I would suggest not the July twenty fifth, as we have a very full schedule.
I would not, I would not suggest that either, so please find a date that is not already packed.
Uh, August eighth could be the next available for board here.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, next case?
Next case is B O A one four six one thousand. The address being eighty-six Grampian Way. Is the applicant and or their representative president?
Uh, yes, this is Shane Losi with Chuen Company Architects, representing Maureen Marata. Um, I believe she's on the list as well. Um, this is for proposed dormer on an existing single family, and we're asking for um three, we had three violations that we're asking for. The first is a extension of a non-conforming use, uh, this is a single family in a single-family zone, so we believe that one was cited incorrectly. Um, the other two are dimensional violations, one for F A R. Um, the the zone F A R is required at point four, we are existing point four-two, and we're only adding ninety square feet, so the proposed F A R would be point four-three. Um, and we're asking for side yard, which the proposed dormer aligns with the existing side of the house. Uh, so in these pictures right here, the right side of the house, that's the side where it's on the, the lower right corner, that right side of the house in that picture, is the wall that's, has the violation um, required is twelve feet, and the average of the dormer is at seven point five feet. Um, if you just go back a few slides, you can just note these last two dimensional, uh, on the, sorry, on the site plans. Yes, so these last two dimensional regulations that were cited, there's an existing double lot, um, the mortgage is only tied to the lot that the house sits on. If both lots were considered, neither of these would be violations. Um, so just in having a lot separate, create the two for, the violations for F A R and for side yard. Um, there's existing, the dormer is creating room for a primary bedroom and bathroom, which will replace two smaller bedrooms, so we're actually reducing the bedroom count in the house from six to five. Um, and it's just gonna be, nothing is seen from the front of the house, the dormer is on the backside, so nothing is seen from the spot, you can see it if you go up the hill from the street on the side, but um, Savin Hill Park is across the street from this. And the dormer basically takes up the length of the backside of the house, but again, it's only adding ninety square feet to the overall size of the house. Which we remove for, or you can see that in the proposed floor plan. Uh, so these are existing floor plans, you can keep going, um. So this is uh, the next sheet, please. So this is the existing third, or the proposed third floor plan, where we see the dormer for the last few feet um, pushing out, so it's already, it's already finished there, up to this level and two bedrooms. So we're just, again, making two bedrooms into one bedroom and a bathroom. You kind of see the set through our section on the right, the existing roof line, and then the proposed dormer. And then the next few slides show the elevations of what we're proposing, so we can see um that, so on the side, we have the, the, on the left side is the right side elevation, where we see on the right portion, that added dormer, um, and the added balcony off the back of the proposed bedroom, and then on the right side is the rear elevation, again, showing uh, the proposed dormer across the the length of the house. And we can take any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. Our office conducted a Butters meeting on April nineteenth, uh, where the majority of Butters in attendance expressed support for the proposal. Uh, we received multiple letters in support, which I believe we forwarded to the board. And the applicant eventually went on to meet with the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, uh, where their general membership voted unanimously to support the project, uh, with this, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Okay, hearing no other testimony?
Maureen, I see your hand is raised, are you here for this case?
She's the owner.
Okay, so, hearing no other public testimony, may I have a motion?
Um, motion to approve?
Do you want B P D A?
With B P D A design review?
Yes, yes.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, have a good night. Next, we have case B O A one oh one nine two eight zero. The address being ten to twelve Bentham Road. Is the applicant and or their representative president? Anyone for ten to twelve Bentham Road?
Yes, Arlene Crew third.
Are you the owner?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, can you walk us through your um, request?
Okay, my name is Arlene Crew third of ten twelve Bentham Road, Dorchester, Mass. I've owned my home since four twenty-nine oh five. I am proposing to put a two-car driveway on my property. Um, parking on my street has gotten worse over the years, as other neighborhoods. A lot of people on the street have about three or more cars. Neighborhood has changed also. Also, I live next door to an Airbnb. And once again, parking is an issue um, for the street and myself as an elder person. Safety is important also. Um, but I would always hope to park close to my home when I do come home, um. Sometimes that's not possible, um. And I've worked closely with Ross, the liaison of Dorchester. I've gone to the Butters meeting, and I passed out flyers, and there was no objection.
Okay, um, it. Are there questions from the board? I'm gonna ask us, uh, before Ms. Better Brazza does, did Mr. D'Amico have a, a, an opinion? But I don't have the opinion in front of me.
He did, I, I, I have it, um. It, Bob D'Amico from the Boston Transportation Department basically said, there's not enough room for driveway. And the minimum width should be ten feet, I would like to suggest a, a denial for this case.
Um.
What is the width of your?
It's, it's longer than, it's the width, ten feet or more. I have the um, is this revised of twenty ten, let me see, I'm sorry. It was revised on ten twenty-three nineteen, that it is ten feet or more. Um, is this what you guys have here?
I don't know, I can't, I can't read that thing, it's so small, so if someone tells me it says more than that, then I'll.
I sent the updated, um.
Yeah, this, this actually does have ten feet, so you're
Okay.
You're, you're okay with that, um.
So the other issue, the other issues, the front yard.
Also commented.
It would be one car behind the other, not side by side.
Okay, it's better Brazza, please, yeah, go ahead.
And also the B P D A um, commented and recommended uh, denial, and um, the reason for is um, that, that, the
I think it's the ten feet and the front yard, and or the, and the front yard, correct?
Right, and all she parks not to be located, is to be located more than five feet from, from the side lot, side lot. So there's not enough side, side yard setback, that's why they're recommending denial.
Okay.
Even though it's one car behind the other, you saying the width, or you saying the length?
No, typically, you should, when you have um onsite off-street parking, you need to have a side yard at least five feet in dimension from your side lot. And currently, it's at zero.
Hmm.
Or at least minimum, if I'm reading your survey plot plan, it's, it's very minimum. But, so I think, I think we can move on to
Yes.
To testimony, but I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Could I just, sorry, another clarifying question is, so there, is there a curb cut now, or would you need a new curb cut?
New curb cut.
Okay, I have a curb cut at the moment, I would have to get a curb cut.
Alright, let's go to public testimony, understood, thank you.
That wouldn't be no problem.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, this time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, as you heard the applicant mention, she was in touch with our office, and flyers were circulated to a Butters. Uh, I'm unaware of any concerns at the moment, uh, with that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, any follow-up questions, clarifying questions, okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that it would be for only one parking space.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Next.
One parking space, that's no problem.
Correct, thank, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four three six nine five one. The address being ten to ten A Walk Hill Street. The applicant and or their representative president?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you identify yourself and your address and what you're seeking relief for?
Yes, um, my name is Emiliano Amoroso, I live in four four nine Canal Street, um, Summerville, Mass. Um, the restaurant, um, round two pizzas and subs, uh, is located at ten Walk Hill Street. Um, I just need to uh, remove the provider for takeout. Um, there was a change of ownership, and I was told that uh, the owner um, has taken the the, the permit for the takeout, and I have to apply for a new one, so I, I just need to get the, the, um, the provider removed in order to get my own.
Thank you, uh, this is pretty straightforward, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, our office is unaware of any concerns with this proposal, uh, with that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck, sir.
You.
Next, we have case B O A one four seven two eight six seven. The address of two ten Rosendale Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative president?
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Peter Severn, I'm the owner applicant, um, owner occupant for two ten Rosendale Avenue. Um, it's a single, uh, single-family home, uh, two-story single-family home in Rosendale. Uh, we're proposing a uh, dormers to the third floor for additional living space, uh, bedroom, bathroom, and a rear single-story addition that does not need standing relief as it meets current setback, um, and also a um replacement of our existing uh, non-conforming uh, rear porch to um, meet the length of the new addition. So the relief we are seeking is um, setback in height for our dormers.
Any questions from the board?
No questions, pretty straightforward.
Yep, hearing none, may uh, public testimony, please? Is there any?
I have one raised hand.
Okay.
Diana, you're, you're unmuted?
Hello, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Dana Bronchuk from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we defer judgment to the board, there wasn't a Butters meeting held on May twenty-third with low attendance. This project was presented to the West Village Neighborhood Association on May twenty-fifth, where there was no opposition. Our office has not received any concerns or statements from the community.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we received many letters of support, and with that, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, next, we have case B O A one four seven one seven six three. With an address of two forty-seven Willow Street. Is the applicant and or their representative president?
Mr. Feeny present, James Feeny?
Mr. Feeny, you're up.
All right, can you hear me now, board?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, um, uh, thanks for hearing this, uh, we coming back in front of the board, we received a permit for shed dormers at two forty-seven Willow Street. Unfortunately, the economics of that job were um, unattainable for us, so we scaled down the job. And we are now looking for one more variance for the back of the house to go above um, the deck and kind of scale down the job.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board?
No questions, straightforward.
Thank you, hearing none, may I have a motion? I mean, sorry, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, uh, the applicant met with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted unanimously on um, May twenty-third to support this proposal, uh, with that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a, forward a motion of approval.
Thank you, may I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge, I need a second. And you're on mute.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. I know, we're getting tired, but we have a few more left, we have a few more left.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four four zero four one four. With the address of eighty-nine Willow, Willow Dean Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative president?
Good evening, board, um, my name is Dan Kessmeric, on behalf of Matt Palmer, I am the architect for the project uh, on Willow Dean. Um, the project um, has an existing non-conforming side yard setback for one of the two um, addition pieces that we're proposing on the uh, rear of the house. There are no further setback um, violations um, for the project.
Thank you, uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information, the Sent back information, the community process, our office conducted the butters meeting on April twentieth. No concerns were raised by a butters and the applicant went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on May twenty third, where they also voted to unanimously approve this project. With that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay, with that, may I have a motion? I'm sorry, was that a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion of approval.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four three one seven five three. The address of twelve Amherst Street is the applicant and or their representative present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Anthony Ross, three forty three Belgrade Avenue in Rosendale, on behalf of the applicant. On behalf of the applicant, the Cooperative Bank. The bank purchased the adjacent property to the immediately abutting property to the bank, which was a two-family structure in poor condition with much deferred maintenance. They made the investment in this property with the intent to raise the structure and utilize the property for a parking lot for eleven employee cars. This would allow the bank, which is the largest private employer in Rosendale Village and contributes to the economic vitality of the village, to, to continue to make that contribution while relieving some of the parking congestion in the immediate area. The parcel in question is a two-family zone, but it abuts the bank, which is in the neighborhood shopping district. And the abutter on the other side of the property, to the right-hand side at sixteen eighteen Amherst Street, is in support of the proposal and has also agreed to work with the bank on installing shade trees along both sides of the common property line to mitigate the addition of the additional asphalt on the site, which was a concern that was raised in the community review process. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, um, so can you just clarify the housing that's presently there? Was it occupied when you purchased it or?
Uh, it was unoccupied when the bank purchased it, it was in extremely poor condition. The bank looked into possibly reusing the structure and they made a determination that it would likely have to be raised.
Are there questions from the board?
So, so in this case, it'll be raised, it won't be replaced.
That's correct.
And currently, you don't have any occupants?
No, it's been vacant since the bank, since before the bank acquired the property.
Okay, and how many parking spaces do you currently have on, on the property that the bank is, is located?
Um, I, I counted approximately thirty-six.
And how many employees do you currently have?
Uh, the bank tells me they have approximately a hundred employees at their three, at their three locations.
At the Rosendale location.
They have over sixty, they are working a hybrid schedule where they're having people come in three days a week and work remotely as much as possible to again alleviate parking congestion and, and commuting.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, but actually, I would like to read both Bob DiMico's comments on, on the parking. So he basically, so from the BTD basically said, remove the space closest to the sidewalk, which will reduce the number of spaces to ten. And then for the BPDA, I'm just grabbing it right now, unless you have it in front of you.
BPDA says.
So they recommend, BPDA recommends denial. To, you know, in terms of context, demolishing a two-family home in a residential area is not aligned with the planning goals for the neighborhood. And then in regards to zoning, parking is not allowed use and is out of context within the, with the neighborhood.
And, okay, and I have additional questions, building on some of Ms. Better Barazza's questions, thirty-six spaces that you have presently on your, on the bank site, are they, are they dedicated to employees only, or is that for customers and, and or employees?
That's for customers and or employees.
Okay, so there's no designated number that are for employees per se?
No, they're trying to keep the, the parking spaces at the, on the bank site available for customers as much as possible.
Okay, but currently employees are allowed to park there or they're not?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry, say, I, I can say that I know that sometimes I see bank employees parking there when I, when I go to the bank myself.
Okay, no, that, that's, that's fair.
Madam Chair, if I recall correctly, I do believe they have two parking lots, one which is mainly for customers and the other which is strictly for the staff.
Okay, two on the same site, you mean? Mr. Sten.
One, one is, one is on the site and one is down the street.
Yeah, they have a second parking lot on Belgrade Avenue, further up Belgrade Avenue.
I see.
Which is for the employees.
And then just for context for my colleagues, the bank property is on a zoning sub-district of neighborhood shopping. But the, this property that's in front of us is in a residential zone of two F five thousand.
That's correct.
So all along Amherst Streets, it's residential property.
The, the direct abutter to the right-hand side, which, which would abut this property, is submitted a letter of support and is in support of this in order to remove the, the structure that's been a poorly maintained structure for, for such a long time. So, so much so that whether it could be repurposed is, is a strong lien question.
Understood, let's take public testimony, I know there is, you know, I, we saw a fair number in support and a fair number in opposition and so just want to make sure people have a chance to speak.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. We conducted a butters meeting on May sixteenth, where a small group attended. Many community members voiced concerns about the potential environmental impact of asphalt, asking for measures to reduce, reduce the heat island effect with landscaping, and attorney Anthony Ross stated the bank president would welcome such initiatives. Community members also voiced some concerns regarding traffic and safety, being that the lot is at the end of a one-way street. The applicant pledged to work with Boston Transportation Department over the, the traffic flow concerns. The project went on to present to the West Village Neighborhood Association on May twenty fifth, where some members brought up similar concerns to those of butters. Unsure if that group ended up taking a final stance. As mentioned, we've received letters of support from a direct abutter as well as some letters of opposition from community members and organizations such as Walk Up Rosie. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Are there other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, can I ask one other clarifying question, since Mr. Stenbridge mentioned additional parking? Do you know how much parking is available on this other site for employees?
I do, there's seventeen parking spaces on the other parking lot. I also wanted to mention that during the community review process, there were residents of Belgrade Avenue and Amherst Street who are in favor of this proposal to alleviate parking congestion in the area as well as other businesses. The Sullivan's Pharmacy is adjacent and the Saint Nicarios Church and their parish members are in support. And the last thing I'll mention, just in terms of impact on traffic flow, we are not proposing to change the curb cut, the curb cut would be repurposed and we have pledged in, in, in response to concerns about the heat island effect to investigate the possibility of using more reflective paving surfaces. And also, as I mentioned, the rear of this site is the south and it has quite a number of shade trees on the property at forty-five Birch Street and the abutter on the west side sixteen eighteen Amherst Street has agreed to work with the bank on installing shade trees on both the bank side of the common property line and on the abutting properties side of the property line.
Okay, um, any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, given that the site is in proximity to the commuter rail and a lot of public transportation, I'm going to recommend that we, a motion for denial. I just don't see the replacement of residential housing that's currently zoned for residential to, to additional cars. It seems to go against the goals of the city of Boston in promoting the use of public transportation to reduce carbon emission. So that's, that's why I'm putting forward that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four three 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 four three with the address of one forty-one Coleberg Avenue is the applicant and or their representative present.
Uh, I, this is Eric Zacherson, architect of the project, I'm here to speak for. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, can you just identify yourself?
Eric Zacherson, nine Sackville Street, architect for the project, contact Del Olson.
And if you could give us some background on it or someone?
The project is for Mrs. Pearson and her sister live in this existing home, have lived here for quite a while. Would like to add a small addition on the rear, which is basically a bedroom and a bathroom so that their, her daughter can live with them and help take care of them as they age in place and eventually will not be able to handle the staircase. There is a rear yard setback violation because of the orientation of the house towards Coleberg and then it is also under overlay because of the boulevard that it's adjacent to.
Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, we had the applicant circulate flyers to homes within three hundred feet. We did not hear any feedback or any concerns regarding the proposal. And there's not believe, I don't believe there's an active civic association in this area. With that, we'll defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA, the rediscussion section from five P M. We have case BOA one four one two five four six with the address of thirty-six G Street is the applicant and or their representative present.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is James Christopher of six eight six Architects with the business address of eleven fifty-six Dorchester Ave. I'm here tonight on behalf of Gene Fahey and Maureen Lane for thirty-six G Street. It's currently a single-family house, there is no intent to change the occupancy, we are constructing a rear addition which will be twenty feet off of the rear building at Gray and then another seven feet at the second floor. So on the first floor, we'll be matching our rear abutter, constructing a newer kitchen and interior floor plans, a new, can't leave a deck at the rear and then a master suite above. If you get onto the next slide, there's the master suite, you can see our butters property to the left. Oh, these are the existing drawings, scroll down, sorry, keep going, that's the existing, existing. Existing, keep going, I proposed. So they're constructing the, the twenty-foot rear addition, which would consist of a man-sout roof. We worked with our direct abutter as much as possible to try to mitigate the concerns. He would still like to see the setback a little reduced a little, but we feel that this does not violate his view or impact his house in any way. The owners are, have, the, Gene's family has owned this house since the nineteen twenties and as a part of this addition will, will return. The house will be renovating the full exterior, including trying to reproduce some of the, the dental moldings and decorative one-eight wood along the front of the property. So with that, I'll happily try to answer any questions I can.
Thank you, with that, are there any questions from the board?
No questions, pretty straightforward.
Okay, hearing, hearing none, may I take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, O N S, the butters meeting on December fifth of twenty twenty-two. There were roughly six abutters in attendance. Those that spoke, spoke in opposition to the proposal. We later received one three one one call in opposition, one letter in opposition and a letter from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association that was also in opposition. The letter stated, the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is in total opposition to the proposed development at thirty-six G Street, South Boston. We as a group, as well as media butters, have tried to work with owners of this property to reduce the size of the expansion to match the surrounding houses, but to no avail. We are more than willing to support a smaller expansion to match the direct abutter, but once again, they only say no. In conclusion, from the above reasons, we want to go on record in opposition for this proposal. That information will refer to the board at this time, thank you.
And sorry, I, I just want to add, ask a follow-up question. The, the folks that you said were opposed at a butters meeting, what was their stated reason?
I believe it was, it was for the similar case, similar reasons stated in the Gate of Heaven letter. Just concerns about the size and the scope of the, of the addition in the rear.
Okay, sorry, Laura, Laura.
Thank you, hi, Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and read the letter. Please note that Council President Flynn submitted a letter of opposition along with his fellow South Boston elected officials, Congressman, Congressman Lynch, Consular at Large Flaherty, Senator Collins, and Representative Biel. And his read, a read of follows. Dear Board of Appeals Subcommittee, I'm writing to join nearly fifty of my neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association in opposition to the proposed project at thirty-six G Street. The proposed project seeks to reconfigure and expand the existing rooftop structure, confirm the structure's occupancy as one family dwelling in a rear addition to the existing structure. Neighbors have expressed concerns that this change will be far too large for the existing structure and that these modifications will be inconsistent with the rest of the duplex that this project will occur on. Moreover, neighbors have noted that seemingly lack of hardship with respect to his proposal and that this property is owned by an absentee landlord who has repeatedly neglected this property for years and created quality of life issues for a butters. This proposed project is also very close to the abutting properties, which will impact the sunlight and shadows of its neighbors as well create issues with airflow, airflow and open space. This proposal is inconsistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and residents have overwhelmingly expressed that it will negatively impact their quality of life. Therefore, I join my neighbors in opposition to this project. I hope that the Board of Appeals will listen to the community to reject this proposal and request for bearings. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out at ed@flynn@boston.gov. Thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council, directly in opposition.
Okay. Are there other raised hands?
Haley, are you here to speak on this case?
Yes, sorry, Haley Dillon from Senator Nick Collins' office. We'd like to stand with our letter and speak in opposition. Thank you.
William, you're unmuted.
He's still muted. I don't know. Stephanie, you can impact that.
Go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, so my name's William G. McDonald. I live at thirty four G Street.
We can't hear you again. Did he disappear?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't know why that's happening. So I'm the director butter, but I'm also attached, so it's different to being next to somebody. And then on the other side, there's, there's a parking lot at thirty eight to forty G Street where I am the trustee of the parking lot association with this twenty four pocket spot. So I'm the butter on both sides of this property. My, 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 my main concerns are being a construction supervisor, licensed construction supervisor in Massachusetts. I'm also a party member of the I B W local one oh three and I worked twenty years in the construction department of the Boston Housing Authority. So I know a little bit about construction, what's going on here. All right, this property next to me has, has been basically neglected for thirty years. And it's, and it's an ice store, it's probably the biggest ice store in South Boston. You say, well, why wouldn't you want it fixed? I want it fixed. But she wants to put on a twenty seven foot addition, goes twelve feet past my, my house has a fifteen foot addition on the back that her grand uncle. Put on in nineteen thirty seven. If she wants to go fifteen feet, the same length as my house. I wrote the letter to the board. I wrote the letter to everyone. I have no problem with the expansion, but she wants to go like twenty seven feet. It's going to block all the sunlight in my yard. My grandkids are going to have no more sun. The airflow, all kinds of problems. So I've talked to them, I've tried, tried hard to work with them. They, they don't want to have any, anything to do with anything. So we had a Butters meeting on the fifth of December and every, that was a Zoom meeting. No one there approved this. It was. There was opposition and then, and then it was not making one opposition. There's nobody.
Okay, can, can you just speak to your own opposition? We, we've heard.
My opposite is they want to put three, three foot from my building, they want three foot from my property line. They want to put a seventy seven foot high wall. That's going to block all, all my sun and everything else. And so if they want to, and also I'm not against, I'm not against people doing stuff, working their house. But if she wants to make it as, as big as my house, I will not oppose this, but as far as now, it's just way too big for the neighborhood. It's way too big. It's, it's, she, the, the, the person who owns.
Understood.
Yeah, okay, so. I, I also had a petition. I dropped stuff off. I sent pictures in. I hope you have those pictures.
Thank you.
I also put a petition in with fifty eight names on it and there, there was, there were.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other? Speakers?
John, you're unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you follow me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, my name is, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Yetman. I reside at five thirty eight East Fourth Street. I also have rental property next door at five five four forty two. I've resided on this block for over forty two years. And I am in total opposition of the building that's going to go on at thirty six G Street. I, I won't bore you with all this stuff. You already heard it. Other than the building has never been maintained my whole time I've been living here and it's, it's kind of a disgrace. There's been raccoons that lived there over the years. I've actually followed them because they went through my trash barrels and. They were living in the house, so it's, it's not a good thing. It's detrimental for my neighborhood and.
Thank you.
That's, well, thank you.
Okay.
One more hand.
All right, we'll take this last one.
Luann, you're unmuted.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Luann O'Connor. I reside at six Shepton Terrace in South Boston. And my vote here is in opposition. The building itself, the lot is just too small to support this type of addition. And where Mr. McDonald lives, he would literally be looking at a sidewall with no windows. It would block all of his sunlight. It is a family home, so it, it's just too big. It's not the right project.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, can I have a moment to rebut?
I do, I do have some questions.
Yes, let, let, let's ask the questions first. Yes, ma'am.
So. It appears that. Your, your adjacent a butter has kind of a rear. Massing, is it two stories or three stories high? Where then you want to expand at the rear?
Yeah, butter, I believe it's two stories, will be.
Yeah, two stories, okay. And you're proposing three stories and that expansion, correct?
Two.
Two, okay, so the, it's almost, it's, it's almost similar to your butter with the exception that you go out. And I'm looking at the deck and then you go on top of that deck, almost like seven feet out.
Is a seven foot overhang at the second floor. At grade, we're even.
Right, but it's like a seven foot overhang, okay. I mean, and then your F A R, what, what's, what's existing? And then you're proposing, I see even.
We're only adding about eight hundred, we're only adding about eight hundred square feet. The existing F A R is two thousand five hundred and fifty six square feet. We're going to three thousand three hundred and seventy seven square feet. The rear yard setback is still twenty feet. We meet all of the dimensional requirements. The only zoning violations that are not met here are the iPod, South Boston zoning code violations.
Right, so your, your, your F A R is one point three five proposed. Do you know what the F A R was, is existing?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can.
But the increase is only, you, you said six hundred?
It's eight hundred and.
Eight hundred square feet, okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Okay, if I may, Madam Chair, you know, we'd be happy to work with the BPDA on the limit of the rear wall extension. We certainly appreciate Mr. McDonough's position. We did work with the Butters. We did make changes to the plan, several actually. I met with Mr. McDonough at my office on separately, on several occasions to try to work directly with him. To resolve the concerns and we appreciate his position. He has it and my client have theirs. But you know, we believe that this is a viable project. We believe it's consistent with South Boston. It keeps the single family, a single family. It keeps the driveway and it still has a twenty foot rear yard. I do not feel that it is too big or that it is inappropriate for South Boston. I feel that is right.
So, okay, we understand your position. So can I understand? When you say work together, so Mr. Rigduna is, is suggesting that if, if the addition matched his addition. He wouldn't have an issue and it sounds like you're against that option. Is that correct?
My client's purview is to keep the addition where it is and I think that, that may have, you know, it. That is the position that I've been asked to take. I'm happy, as I mentioned, if, should the board think that the project on its merits is approvable, then we will work with the BPDA to, to establish the limit of the rear wall.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso. That the BPDA works with the applicant to. Reduce the rear extension. So that it is comparable to the massing of its neighbors.
Is that essentially what I just asked, Miss? I just want to make sure.
To put it on the BPDA to work with the applicant and it's a proviso to the rear extension.
Is it a proviso that?
It's for BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the rear.
But you're not, you're not limiting the expansion if they decide that it's, it's reasonable as is.
It's up to the BPDA so that they can ask the applicant to do a shadow study if needed, but I'm, I'm not going to put those set limitation. It is to work with the context of the nearby buildings.
Okay, may I have a second? Hearing none? Do I have?
Um, second.
That's fine. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
So the chair votes no, the motion does not carry. Do we have an alternate motion?
Do you want to put forward a motion, Madam Chair?
Uh, I would put forward a motion of approval. With the addition being no. More than the, the addition next door. So working with the neighbors and BPDA to ensure the alignment. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
No.
Okay, so that motion does not carry either. Samantha, would you like to suggest an alternative?
Madam Chair, if you feel that it's appropriate to defer this to a whole board, that would be your call. But if we can't come to a conclusion on a motion, then it would be denied and the motions would fail.
Do we have an alternate motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Final case.
That would be case B O A one four five zero seven zero one. With the address of thirty three thirty five Shaw Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Alex Rodriguez. I'm here on behalf of my father, the applicant Ruben Rodriguez. For the denial, or rather deferral, the initial denial for plans to extend. A second floor living space in a two family home into the attic for the purposes of a master suite. Previous reason for deferral was unclear hand drawn plans, which are included in the attachment you have. Towards the end, these are the newer cleaner, non-hand drawn plans as requested by the board. Not sure what else to say next. The.
You're fine.
So the violations that we have standing were extension of not conforming use as a two family in a single family sub district. This is an existing single fam, I'm sorry, an existing two family home with a street that has ten other two family homes already on it, so that's. Existing and consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The other two violations are for excessive F A R and a number of stories occupied being exceeded. As far as the F A R, we currently are at, sorry, let me just pull that up. The building as it stands is already past the current F A R allotment of forty percent. It's currently at forty two percent. Our proposal would add a total of six hundred and twenty one square feet, bringing the total F A R up to forty nine percent. We are in a single family district. However, there are, as mentioned, multiple two family homes on the street. And at least four of those other homes also currently surpass their F A R. We believe that the. The zoning that is more applicable to our specific street and neighborhood would be. The two family zoning, which would allow for up to an eighty percent F A R.
Any question? I'm going to ask if there are any questions from the board.
Yes, I do have some questions. What's your ceiling height in the attic space?
Ceiling height in the attic?
That you're going to make habitable?
Eleven, can we want to say eleven feet is the current ceiling height?
Okay.
So there are, there's.
And are you doing, I'm sorry, just have additional questions. Are you not, you're not doing any exterior work? It's working within the envelope?
Correct.
Okay, great. And I really appreciate you, your applicant, actually doing measured drawings. It's very helpful. Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, with that, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. During the community process, neighbors had questions but no concerns, seeing as this is to legalize the two family. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. We'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that there'll be no building code relief granted.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
There you are.